I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda for August 20th, as may be amended. Do you have anything, or Chat, do you have anything that we need to move around?
No, I was just, I don't think there's anybody, I don't know if there's anybody here for a specific thing that's far down on the agenda that they want to move up, so.
Okay. All in favor of accepting the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
And entertain a motion to accept the minutes of July 23rd, as may be amended. We've got three sets, so I just have to get the right ones in front of me. Okay. I did not have anything on this. There he is.
Neither did I.
Just in time to vote. Depends on, depends on what clock you're using.
Actually, it's in the other room.
We voted already.
That's me, it's paycheck.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, I thought it was mine.
Okay. We're on the minutes of July 23rd.
I didn't see anything.
I did not have anything on this either. Okay, all in favor of accepting the minutes of July 23rd, please say aye.
Aye.
And entertain a motion to accept the minutes of July 31st, as may be amended. And this was...
This was the one you were not at?
Uh...
Yeah, this is...
Very short.
This is the one I was not at, right.
Right.
I didn't see anything here.
Neither did I. What just came on? Did you have anything there?
No, everything is good.
Okay.
Sounds like a relay stock.
I'm sorry?
It sounds like a relay stock, could be in the fountain.
All in favor of accepting the minutes of July 31st, please say aye. Okay, I have to abstain because I was not...
Sounds like a relay or whatever in there. Motion to accept the minutes of August 5th.
Okay. And again, I didn't have...
No, this is another short one.
Yeah, this was a special meeting anyway.
Yeah, I'm all good with that.
Okay. All in favor of accepting the minutes of August 5th, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Select Board member concerns?
I'm just gonna bring up the line painting on the Killington Road again.
Yep.
Are we getting any closer on that?
Well, the yellow's done.
Yeah.
And they're supposed to be here at the end of next week.
I haven't been up the road in a while.
No, no, Killington Road is yellow.
Okay. You can tell which side is which?
We can tell which side of the road, we don't have the fog lines on yet, but what's gonna happen is, is when we get done the painting while they're here doing the project we paint, they'll be supposedly doing the rest, so that's the plan.
Oh, great, so people can stop. I can say it's done. That's it for me.
And, yeah, just so everybody's aware...
Done by me, it's always good.
The milling, the milling on the last section of Killington Road...
No, I go to the top every day, so, yeah.
Unless, unless it changed in the last 24 hours, the milling on the top section of Killington Road's supposed to start tomorrow, and they will spend tomorrow and Thursday, and that will be paved, and then on Friday, they're supposed to be on East Mountain Road starting base course.
Okay, great, and Dean Hill Road?
Dean Hill Road's right after that. I mean, we're, we are, as of today or tomorrow, we will be done with all of the town's work with the stone lining and the culverts will be done on East Mountain Road, and we should be done, uh, the other one by Friday or Monday on Dean Hill, so we'll be right ahead of the papers.
Okay. I don't have a concern as much as a little update, I was in talking to Chat today, and we still have not received any word from FEMA as far as our request to have, uh, the final amount of money, not so much forgiven, but they're asking for it back, and we're contesting that we have to return it. So it was given over to the state, it's now down in Washington, uh, it's being presented by the state for us and our local FEMA representative, so we have yet to hear anything back. We expected it in July, we just haven't heard anything yet.
Yeah, and we budgeted that we were not gonna get it anyway.
Right, yep. Okay. Good evening all. You're up. It's citizen input, if you like.
Unless it's covered under...
Are you here for something that is not already on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just wanna put one on where are we against your schedule for the, you fired us?
Right now, we are, just got a notice today from Vermont A and R, Agency of Natural Resources, our wetlands permit will be out of the comment period on the 28th, and to date, they have not received any comment. Upon completion of that, uh, we will have our, that permit, we're still, we should, any day now, we're expecting a stormwater permit, when both of those are completed, as far as the state's concerned, we will be able to start. Um, this Friday, we should be going over the final biz, we'll be going over that with the select board as soon as possible, and then we should be full steam.
And they've been, they've had a pile smoldering there for about a week.
I know, if you're next day, you'll have to live up there.
But it appears to be, it appears to be pretty much gone. Anything else? Yes. Could you identify her for the minutes? Identify yourself for her minutes?
My name's Jack McTracy, I am a resident of the town, and I also am the operations manager for a retail shopping branch.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm actually here today to voice my concerns about the medical marijuana dispensary ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
And I actually would like to ask the board a few questions before I give my points and thoughts on that.
Well, that's our next item, number six, anyway.
Yeah. That's our next item, and you, the floor will be open to you once that comes up.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, you're back up.
Okay, so I have questions for the board members, because you guys are proposing the ordinance. So first and foremost, my questions are, why do the board members feel that a ban on a medical dispensary is beneficial to the town?
Why do we feel that it's beneficial to the town?
Yes.
I feel that, um, the town of Killington is not a medical center, I feel it is a recreational center. With that, I've already said that I don't believe that, my opinion is, is that, um, I understand the medical marijuana, I understand the recreational side of it completely, okay? Um, most of the people that I know that are medical marijuana, um, license holders in the town of Killington are already growing their own. We would be putting a shop up here, and if we okay it, there would be a shop that would be coming into Killington, to the town of Killington, and, um, basically really, all it would be doing is bringing folks in to go to the medical marijuana shop, and it's not for recreational side. I have said straight out in the past, that if, if, not if, but when the state of Vermont makes marijuana recreational, that, um, I think it fits into this town. Um, I've, your name next, is it Mari?
Mari.
Mari, okay, so Mari, you own a CBD shop in town?
Yep.
And we're not shutting that, we didn't say anything about that, it's on the recreational side, it's not just, it's medical and, and recreational. One of the other things is, is that there are people that are in the medical marijuana, I think there's only around six in the state right now? Is it six medical?
There's only, there's only like three dispensaries in the entire state of Vermont, and they're in Burlington, Rattleboro, and Brandon, so any, any medical marijuana cardholders that are from the state of Vermont have to travel 45 minutes if they don't, if they're not legally growing their own, they have to drive 45 minutes to get their medicine. Now, we're not talking about recreational, and I understand that you're saying because Killington is a recreational center, that you're, you don't want it here, but we're talking about people's medicine, so we're talking about them having easy access to medicine.
Okay, but you're asking, you asked a question, and I'm jumping in, and then, and so now I was asking the...
I'm just trying to rebut it, yeah.
Well, yeah, but you could rebut it after I'm done, I guess. But, um, one of the other things is, I believe there was more than three dispensaries, maybe there's three companies that have dispensaries in the state of Vermont, and I believe there's actually more than three, three places, but if there's only three places, there's only three places.
I agree with you.
But there's also, you're pretty sure, but I, I think there's more, but also, those three places, if we go with that, are basically trying to set up to make it that they're lobbying the state to be the only ones that can sell recreational. That's, that's happening. So, um, this is just a step for a rec, for a medical to step in, and once again, I stick to that the town of Killington is not medical, and if you want to say that I'm holding back medicine from people, I'm not, because there have been, um, a pharmacy tried opening up here, and people have to travel a half hour to get their medicines. I mean, it's just my position, and if you don't agree with my position, I understand that completely, but the majority of the people that I know in this town that have a medical marijuana license are growing their own. That's the majority of the people that I know that have it. So that's where I stand, and you can disagree with it, and I can disagree with you.
So I, I also know that the town of Killington is close to maybe like $2.2 million in debt, so why wouldn't you want the tax revenue from a medical marijuana dispensary? You know, like Colorado, even on a medical front, they...
Colorado is a state, not a town.
Yes, I understand, but there are also towns that have generated millions of dollars in just medical...
Yeah, we can't... Well, I mean, I guess since I'm the one that's been voiced out on this a lot or whatever, um, first of all, um, the town of Killington is not in $2.2 million worth of debt, I don't know where you get that from, but it's not in $2.2 million worth of debt, okay? And second, how is the town of Killington going to collect money from the sale of recreational or medical? Please explain that to me.
You can even look up at the Department of Marijuana, or the Department of Overseers of the Department of Marijuana in Colorado, and you can see how...
No, 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 I'm not asking about Colorado, I'm asking you because you told me that the town of Killington is in $2.2 million in debt, and that a medical marijuana dispensary is going to help that, so I'm asking you, how?
There was a, there was an article posted in the Times where you guys wanted to borrow money, because you, this was in January, January 2018, there was an article in the now Times that said that the board wanted to borrow money to help pay for renovations, and for the $4.7 million public safety building that you're building, the $1.2 million in golf course renovations, the $7 million worth of road repairs that need to be done in Killington, and then not even to include all of the damage from Irene, so I don't understand where you, how you're saying, like, I actually saw quotes that said that you guys were thinking about borrowing money.
But we didn't, but, but, but...
You may have not borrowed money, but you're still...
I have a question.
But I'm, I'm still on, let's say we have all that debt that you just said, let's just say it, okay? We have $20 million of debt that you just said that we borrowed, but we didn't borrow, okay? My question is, recreational or medical, okay? How is that going to help our revenue?
Because as a town, you can set up a town tax on marijuana, just like many towns in Colorado have done. Many towns in Colorado have set up, you know, scholarship funds for the, like, for this purpose, they put it back into education, they put it back into education, like, educating children. I have statistics here that I could give the board, and the board could overlook the statistics, and it's a common rate from the revenue in Colorado.
Chat wants to say something.
Can I just finish one thing?
That's fine.
Colorado has set up in their state that towns are allowed to tax.
Yeah.
The state of Vermont, I'm sorry, that's the state we live in?
Yeah.
Okay, does not give a town the authority to tax on medical marijuana.
Actually, I'm...
So once again, I ask you, how, because your argument is, is that we need to allow medical marijuana into this town because it's going to help with our debt, and I'm asking you, if we're not allowed to tax it, how is it going to help us? Unless, unless we put a, a large tax on the business of saying, you want to open up a medical marijuana business here that they do in Connecticut and Massachusetts, I mean, in Massachusetts, where they come in and say, um, if you want to open up a, a retail store, that, the town is going to charge you $150,000 a year for your license, and then you have to do all this other stuff, but your argument, so far that I've heard, is that it will help us take care of this debt that we so-called have, and I'm just asking you, with the state now not allowing us to tax medical marijuana...
Is that legal too, or is it just medical?
What?
We can't tax, actually, the state of Vermont does not allow us to provide any local taxes. Uh, we're a Dillon's Rule state, which is one of three states in the country, which all regulations and ordinances flow through the state. Um, we do not have the authority to tax individually for anything. That is actually a, a state law. Everything has to flow through. We have a 1% options tax on rooms and meals.
And alcohol.
That was allocated by the state, and the state keeps 40% of the money, but it is a part of the state laws, we do not have the authority to add, we can't change that to 2%, we can't add a tax to other things, the town, states like Colorado, every county has the authority to tax on its own, we do not have that authority.
I still have a few more questions for you guys.
Sure.
Um, so do you believe that the civil penalty for smoking marijuana in public will alleviate the town from the debt that it's incurred?
I, I didn't understand, you mumbled at the end, couldn't hear it.
Do you believe that the civil penalty for smoking marijuana in public will alleviate the town from the debt that it has incurred? Like, from the debt that...
Do I believe that the civil penalty...
Yeah, civil penalty, your ordinance, your ordinance includes a civil penalty for smoking marijuana in public, so if you're gonna give people a $500 fine for smoking in public, do you believe this fine is going to help alleviate your debt?
The way, the way the ordinance is written, that was what the original draft was, the current draft does not include that.
Okay.
The, the penalty is actually allevi, the only thing that we are regulating is smoking on town-owned property. That is the only place that it exists.
Okay.
So just to follow...
And the state actually prohibits public smoking of marijuana, so...
Of course, it's not legal.
Just, just to back that up, when we had this in front of us, it was a draft, the first one, and I was the one that brought up the fact that we should not be telling people what they can do in their own public building if they decide to, and it was dropped because it was a draft, and we're back here again, because technically, this is still a draft, because we're looking at it now, but we made sure that we were not gonna say that I, that owns a commercial building, would have to be fining people if I allowed them to smoke marijuana recreational or whatever in my building, but the town, as board members, we are allowed to say that there is no drinking on town property, or there's no smoking on town property also. But the state of Vermont, just to be clear, already has a law that there's no smoking in any public building anyway, but we are not going to police it, and we are not going to fine it, and we made sure that was pulled out at the last meeting.
Well, I think the rest of my points are new, please.
I, I really do appreciate your input, and, I mean, we may differ on one thing, but I think in the end, we want it to be right.
I mean, it's just, I kinda think that it's my personal belief that the board has kind of, you know, maybe personally, or, or, you know, misappropriated some of the funds and put them into other things, like into $1.2 million into golf course renovations, um, I just think that, you know, a $4.7 million into a public safety building, I just think is a little over excessive, and, you know, kind of a waste of money. I mean, that's my personal opinion, and we have different opinions.
Right.
So I just think, you know, you have $7 million in road repairs, and you're gonna build a $4.7 million building, you know, I just think that it could have been better appropriately placed, I understand that that was a vote of the people, and I just think that, you know, personally, for me, I, just because you believe that Killington is recreational, and that there should not be medicine here for people, and for it to be 30 minutes away or 45 minutes away, or even a few hours away, because from what I know and my research that I have done personally, and have done a lot of research on the subject, that there actually are only three medical dispensaries in the state. So I think that, you know, I, we have different opinions, and, you know, obviously, we vote our selectmen in, and...
Right.
And if you'd like, I also started a petition with people who do feel that there should be a dispensary in town, because I know that if this ordinance passes, passes today, you have 60 days to start a petition, and I already took the liberty of putting myself to start a petition, because I do think that people should have access to medical marijuana where they live.
Okay, that's fine.
The town's not against recreational, so I'm just saying that if somebody comes to find a legal license, would that probably be more open to recreational? No, not at all.
The town of Killington, at least with this board, I believe, has said that we're a recreational town. That's, that's where I stand, we're a recreational town. If, if, if the state of Vermont, to be honest with you, there's two options that the state of Vermont can pass in this matter of, um, retail?
Yeah, there's two, the, the, the State Senate, uh, the bill that they introduced, and the reason it didn't get passed this year was, one bill was introduced stating that it was going to be statewide approved, and the other bill, I believe, that came out of the House, was a bill that every town was gonna have the ability to either accept or deny it. Um, I don't know where it's gonna end up, but that was the two competing bills that were there last year, and I, one of them's, I believe, will get through this year, I don't know which one.
And if, and if, and if the state of Vermont allows a board to be the only ones to say if recreational marijuana is legal to be sold in a store in the town of Killington, I've already publicly said that I am not against recreational marijuana, I just believe that medical marijuana is not the place for the town of Killington at this time, and if I was the lady next to you, I would be agreeing with 100% of what I'm saying here, because you know that you don't currently have a medical marijuana dispensary, and you cannot get it, it is very hard to get, and if it's allowed, then these other people will come in, and you're not gonna have a shot at the recreational side, and I believe...
I wasn't even aware that, that the town was more open to a recreational, I was kind of close to...
Yeah, I got phone calls from many people, and Chi Chi and them, and it's, okay, so I've gotten a lot of phone calls, and, you know, they've actually agreed on that. We are not against recreational.
Good, because on that point, I would just like to add that Colorado has seen an inflation of 6.5 million visitors, I, you know, and just for the cannabis industry alone, and, and the board, I have, you know, obviously printed out statistics, and if 6.5 million visitors would absolutely, you know, boost our economy, and that's what it's about, is making Killington, you know, a better place, a more marketable place, and a better place for people to want to come for recreation, whether it's biking, or golfing, or any type of recreation, hiking, hiking.
So in your research, how many people live in the state of Colorado?
Way more than the state of Vermont, because I've always said...
I'm just asking, in your research...
It's like 600,000.
I know, I know, I know, I know, but I'm asking you, you did the research, so there's a $6.5 million increase just because people could...
No, I said 6.5 million people have visited there.
Just for marijuana?
Yeah, just for the cannabis industry alone.
Right, so how many people are in the state of Colorado?
A lot more than the state of Vermont.
Is it a 1% increase? Is it a 10% increase? Is it a 20%?
It's like 6.5 million people either way, so it doesn't matter if the percentage increases with 6.5 million people.
It wouldn't matter to me, I mean, I'm a numbers person, and I would like to know that, you know, maybe there's, um, 60 million people in the state of Colorado, but there's probably way more than that, and so, you know, if there's 600,000 people in the state of Vermont...
5.7 million, according to...
5.7 million that live in the state of Colorado? You know, so, so it's about 10%, about 12% in increase or whatever? So, um, you know...
So it must have been like over $6 billion a day, so it's...
Yeah, but once again, it's just, you know, and I, and I hope you understand that the reason why your argument of, um, allowing medical marijuana, or even recreational marijuana into the town of Killington, is not going to help our so-called, um, debt problem that you think we have, because we cannot tax it. Okay, I mean, that, that's just, that's just not gonna happen, but I'm not against recreational. Okay? And I do appreciate your time, and if you want to leave a paperwork, I will read it.
And I also have the petition, so...
Okay.
You are happy with it?
Thank you.
The petition would go to the town office, not to us, yeah. Okay, uh, calling the question, that's under question?
Anybody else have anything on the medical marijuana?
Okay, so we have an ordinance before us. Question is, is it at a point where it can be voted on one way or another?
So I will, once again, like, reading this here, so we have Section 1, and we have A, and it talks about medical marijuana, and then B will say marijuana should have the same meaning as provided in 18 VSA, whatever.
Right.
It's, it's medical marijuana, okay? Anywhere that it's, um, saying, um, you know, D, D to me, hemp products or hemp-infused products shall have the same meaning as provided in 6 VSA. What is 6 VSA, 562? And if we are a town or a board that believes in a, that marijuana is a recreational, um, and we would accept it in here, hemp is already accepted, and hemp-infused products are already accepted in the federal government rules, I believe they just passed, because it's underneath 0.3% of CBD, so I don't think we should be...
Well, you, he identifies it because it's part of the process, but if you go to the Section 2A...
Okay, and that's what...
It's exempt from the ordinance, it's just that they have to provide the definition so that there's clarification.
Okay.
So hemp is exempt from this.
Hemp is exempt?
Because there's definitions of marijuana and hemp.
Right, yeah, okay.
So it was just a matter of, it was a clarification issue, but it is not, it's not covered by this.
Okay. And the penalty's on page two, Section 4, this is for if you're caught smoking on town property?
Correct, the town-owned property.
On a town-owned property.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and my only question on that is, if someone is caught drinking alcohol or beer on a town property, is there the same penalties?
I don't know the answer to that question, I'd have to look, I did not look that up. So I would want to verify that.
Okay, and, um, I would want to have that answer there. I mean, I, I don't want to put a penalty against something if, if we're not allowing a substance, medical, on whatever.
Okay.
We need to find out if alcohol is the same, and I don't know, this policy is just for medical marijuana, that's what we corrected the last time?
Yes.
Okay, and, and once again, where I'm getting at is, my whole thing is, is saying the dispensary, if somebody has a medical marijuana, um, license, and they need to take their medicine, um, do we prohibit, um, people from taking their medicine on town-owned property?
Per this ordinance, yes, they would have to do it, off-premise.
That's what I have stated...
We don't allow people, if, if, yeah, we don't allow people to take alcohol or do...
Yeah, but alcohol's not a medicine.
Right.
It's been clearly defined as not a medicine at all, it's more of a, an addiction. Um, but if somebody has to take their, um, medicine on town property, it's, we're not fining them $500 for it. So I believe that what, and once again, I'm gonna say it, I believe that our ordinance is really just for, to me, is for the dispensary itself of medical marijuana, and if somebody has a license that says that they're allowed to smoke medical marijuana, then the town should not be fining those people if they need their medicine at the time.
Well, the only thing is, is they're not allowed to smoke it in a public place now, by law in the state. This is not, that's just the, really a replication of the state.
So this is just a smoking?
There's no smoking at all.
Yeah, you can, you, like, if somebody's taking the, the chewables, and they're not talking about that, this is smoking.
Hey, what does it say in here, smoking? To point it to me. As I read it, and it's saying hemp products, and it says marijuana, and marijuana shall have the same meaning as provided in 18 VSA.
It says the consumption of, so I could, we'd have to change the word consumption.
Somebody can be taking, somebody could be tak, somebody could be having their medicine, and their medicine can consist of what kind of medicine and other products other than...
So I'd have to, I'd have to look at the word consumption and see what our options are.
I would just say that it's a smoking ordinance, and once again, um, if somebody is having a license, has a medical license to take medical marijuana, and they just need to know that if they are on town property, that they need to take it in an edible form and not in a smoking form, because there's no smoking on town property.
Question, uh, just because there's also alternative forms of smoking, such as vaping, so would that include vaping?
I believe that's up to the state of Vermont, doesn't allow vaping in a public building also.
Correct, right. Correct.
Vaping in public, on a public, like, I mean, this is obviously, if you went outside, then you're not, you know, you're in a public space, not necessarily a public-
Well, the, smoking is prohibited on municipal, smoking cigarettes is prohibited on this property.
And vaping cigarettes is not allowed on-
Yeah, it's all the same. It's on a municipal property, that's not, it's not just in the building, it's on the property.
And I just want to be clear, too, that, you know, even though the town owns a golf course, the golf course is underneath a certain different license for the alcohol and everything else, and it's, and the alcohol goes out onto the greens because it falls underneath there. So at the same time, you know, a golfer is allowed to smoke a cigar on a golf course, so they are allowed to vape on a golf course, and I guess if they have their medical marijuana, they're allowed license, they're allowed to smoke their medical marijuana license. And they're also allowed to smoke recreational because it's been, I don't even know where it's at right now, decriminalized or whatever. So the golf course is not included in this rules and regulations. So any golfers out there that want to go out and smoke their weed, they can go ahead. We're getting somewhere, right? Come on, now you're smiling, so.
I also kind of also feel like that, you know, we allow, you know, consumers to consume alcohol up at the mountain, too. I know the mountain is on technical, I mean, it is still state property because a part of it is national forest, or I guess it's federal land. So we do allow consumers to drink alcohol up there. Alcohol is the third most preventable death in the country. You know, we allow people to go up there and smoke, I mean, I'm sorry, drink, rather, but we're not going to allow them to smoke.
Well, I want to stop you right there, because this ordinance, no, this ordinance, and we made sure, because you read the draft-
Yeah.
... last month, and we told you that, I specifically asked for other public places to be taken out, that I don't believe. And if the resort has a no-smoking policy, we, the town, cannot tell a person or a business what they're going to allow their guests to do on their property. So we're not going to sit here and talk about smoking weed on the mountain because the resort is going to say yes or no.
So we're looking to table this until-
Yeah, to find out-
Consumption is correct, not corrective, but options are given.
Consumption, the consumption word, and the alcohol penalties, and exclude the golf course.
Right. And the young lady out in the audience, if she wants to read it, and you can contact the town manager if you have a question.
Yeah, I have it online as well.
No, but I'm saying, if you want to ask him a question during the week on it, you can go ahead. That's what you're here for.
Should we include, under the penalties and costs, a, simply a warning waiver for someone who's on state property? I mean, town property?
Well, I mean, the reason why I didn't, I mean, first, offense, $500 full penalty, I mean, you know-
Well, that's full, it says 150 waiver penalty.
Yeah, no, I mean, I would say no, but I first would want to say, I want to see if we're fining people $150 waiver if they get caught drinking on town property. And if we're not, then I'm against telling somebody that's-
We're going to be equal, whatever they are.
So when-
Yeah.
All right. So we need to adjust that as well, depending on what the alcohol is.
Correct.
Okay.
And the library that we're on here also, just to make sure, because there is the softball league here, the library is on their own, the town just funds their budget, so we're not saying, the library comes up with their rules of no smoking, no-
Well, no, actually, the state laws apply to that, to, because it's still a municipal facility, but when it came to, like, drinking beer for the-
Softball league?
Softball league, they're allowed to do that under the auspices, because the library can get a liquor, a temporary liquor license for things, and they do do that occasionally where they have wine and cheese parties and things like that, so that all falls under that. But the no-smoking state policy applies to the whole facility.
Okay. All right. So, and we just want to make sure that we have the consumption of edibles or any other form other than smoking-
Right.
-or vaping, because vaping and whatever is the same.
Yep.
All right?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Green Mountain National Financials, and the town has gotten a response as far as the AJGA dates?
Yes. Um, you got an alternative offer from the AJGA to move the AJGA to June 21st to 24th and not be on the July 4th week. So, based on the conversations I have, I did want to bring it to the board before I officially approved it, but it's my understanding that I think that would be acceptable to the board. If that, you know, unless there's any objections, I would, I would recommend that we move forward with moving that date to the third week of June.
Okay.
That was Brown's recommendation also, anyway.
They contacted AJGA, AJGA contacted the resort. They're okay with it?
Yeah, the resort, the resort had, they just wanted to make sure that the select board was on board with that before they signed the hosting agreement.
I'm on board with it.
Okay. Do you need a motion for that?
Um, not officially. I mean, if you would like to, it would be-
I don't think we need a motion, it's just a matter of giving direction to just-
Yeah, I mean, this is just, this is just like-
Brown Golf Course is running the golf course, managing for us, and we gave them a concern, and they agreed with the concern, and they asked for us to move it back a week, and they got it to be done.
Okay. The financials?
So we have the July financials in front of you. We do have a little bit, we have a lot more line items this year than we have in the past when you look at the revenue side, so-
Do you have this you could put up?
Oh, I am sorry.
We actually have people in the audience tonight.
Hey, that's unusual. So, when you look at your greens fees, you'll notice that we broke it down with 18-hole green fees, special green fees, and nine-hole greens fees. And when, so the totals do work, but the numbers don't line up per line. So we had, last year, at this same time, at the end of July, we had $229,000 worth of greens fees, and this year, $209,000, so we're down just a hair. And we're about flat with cart fees. We're about $5,000 down on season memberships, so that would be the equivalent of five memberships of a reduction. Range balls are down a little. Miscellaneous revenue, the reason you would notice that that looks as much down as it is, we do have a miscellaneous line item, but all of those things were always covered in, like, the merchandise items were under there as well. So you'll notice that you have $32,000 worth of merchandise sold, which would then make up that difference to the miscellaneous revenue.
Can I add one thing?
Yep.
Just, if you're not a member there, you wouldn't know this, but this year, the membership, if you, whether it's a midweek or a full week, actually includes unlimited golf balls on the range. So people that are members don't have to go in, they're not going in and buying golf balls. It's already included in the cost of their membership. So the range balls would be down somewhat.
Right.
But also, the membership is down five or six people, as far as full membership. That was it.
On the restaurant revenue side, last year at this time, we had $75,669 in revenue, and this year, when you break down the food, the non-alcoholic beverage, beer and wine and liquor, which gave us the ability to better track the items, we are at $76,299 in total revenue from the restaurant, so we're basically flat there. So in all, we are down a little bit in revenue, with some of the weather things, we're about $29,000 behind last year at this point.
$8,213.
There it is.
Seventy-three.
There you go. So we're-
Our expenses are down $185,541.66. What I had said at the last meeting was, if our revenue is down, let's make sure that our expenses are down.
Yeah.
So we're actually some 160-something thousand dollars ahead of last year.
So $60,000 were down in expenses on the maintenance side. On the pro-shop side, we're down about $56,000, and Jim told you the total. So we are in total expenses, and the restaurant is down from 106 to 77,000. And therefore, as a result, total expenses are down, 180, what was it? 185,591 or 571.64. So we're, we're in a better position than we were at this time last year from an overall revenue to expense side, so things are looking up there.
So when people are looking at this sheet in front of them up there, the first column way at the bottom, the $16,720 or whatever?
Yes.
That's the budget for FY 218.
Right.
The actual FY 218 for period seven was 249,000 negative 500.
And this year, we're at 92,000.
And this year, we're at negative 92,132.
Right.
And August, September, and the two weeks in October are huge, are our biggest months, and that's normally at the end of August and September is when we turn to a positive number.
Yeah.
And one of the good things here is that what's included is that we sold the golf carts.
Right.
Which is, I think it's even listed at about $91,000, but even with that, we're still-
That's not, and that's not-
That's not in here.
That's not in this section, and we would talk about that with the treasurer's report portion for the golf course.
Okay.
Basically, the treasurer's report shows we have $154,000 in the-
Pro-shop.
The pro-shop, 94,000 of which is in the restricted funds. That restricted fund balance is the $122,400 plus two months of cart payments, and also the expense that where we purchased the mower instead of leasing it.
Instead of leasing it, right.
So that, our current balance in the restricted fund is $94,000. And that is where that 122, it's in the cash balance, but it's not in the financials. So that expense, that revenue is not shown.
And in August, and once again, August, September, and the first two weeks, and October, is where we're hoping that that 150, from now on, the 154 balance that's in there as of July 31st should be growing, because we should be positive in August, September.
Technically, in order for us to break even, that number needs to be about 340.
Right. Because we need to get the 250.
So we've got to pay the 250 back. So the two-
Do you have projections to, at least have a ballpark figure on where you might be come November, given-
Well, based on the budget, based on the cash flow projections that we did, is, when we did the budgeting, we should be fine. It's just long as everything hits. We don't have another rain-out month, you know, we should be fine.
But you've got to wait and see.
Well, yeah, I mean, you've got to do that to some degree.
August and September, usually if you go back the last three or four years on the golf course, is throwing a positive of over $100,000 a month into it. So if we have 154 now, and we go 100 positive and 100 positive, you're at the 354.
We're right where we need to be.
It's a weather dependent business.
But it's a weather, right.
And that still leaves us the $94,000 in restricted funds.
But at this point, the August weekends have been very strong.
Yeah, so we just have to hope September sticks in there.
He told me we're doing-
Is the time to play?
I think the revenue side has been Fridays around 10,000, Saturdays 15,000, and Sundays are five, is what he's been averaging the last couple of weekends.
Yeah, and I would want to see what Thursday's, because Thursday's a new Friday.
Yeah, I haven't checked that, yeah.
Thursday, for the last couple of years, Thursday's the new Friday.
It's getting there.
One question about the restaurant. When you had the restaurant, excuse me, the restaurant, does it include the cart? You said the restaurant was-
Yes, all of that is included.
Okay.
Should be split out.
Her income is listed.
The restaurant is about, is about $1,000 up.
Oh, wow.
When you go to the total. When you look at, when you, if you look, you've got to add up all the line items, because we've added a bunch of new categories.
10,000 beverage card.
It goes, it's actually, last year at this time, we were 75,600, and, or was I, I did the math before?
Actually, sorry.
Total is actually 70-
14,000.
76,299. We're at 76,299 from 75,600. We're up a little.
But if you want to copy, it is broken out to, I'm just saying, if you want, if you want to see it.
We're up, that's all, that's the end of the discussion.
We have, we have it in writing.
That's why we have a management firm.
Right. Okay. So we're good there? Questions?
No. Do you need a motion to accept the Green Mountain National-
Yes, please.
What exactly is a special greens fee? Just from my knowledge.
Forget the description.
Like discounted, like special?
There's disaccounted, or it was, there was other, there was special programs that they put in place, and they've been tracking it as a separate line item.
I think they're trying to track, like, in May and June, they were doing the special rate or whatever.
Right.
And so they're trying to track what people from paying full-price 18 holes and the special green fees.
The-
There's no special going to individuals.
No, I'm just wondering. The, and Green Mountain is, belongs to the Lung Card and Lynx Card, where you get to play different courses at a discounted rate, and that would come under a special, as opposed to paying whatever the rack rate is for that particular day.
So while we're still discussing the golf course, every week I open up the Mountain Times, and it's, every week it's the same, and it's like a quarter page or a half page, and it just says, come play Green Mountain. I mean, we should be putting in our rates, showing people. Because, I mean, I think we're going to come into where we say in late September and October, midweek is the lower rate. And if we're going to advertise every week in there, it just says, call for your tee time. And I would like to put down what specials, it's a big ad.
And it should include that there is a resident rate and a state rate, in addition to the regular rate.
It also should say our rates include the golf cart.
Right.
So there's a lot of space in the Mountain Times, just if we can pass it on to-
Yep.
-to David.
Okay.
So the motion's on the floor to accept the Green Mountain National Golf Course July financials.
All in favor of accepting the Green Mountain National July financials? Please say aye.
Aye. We already did the AJGA dates.
AJGA will be moved to the 24th?
21st to the 24th, I believe.
21st to the 24th.
So I'll make a motion to approve the town financial July reports, so we can have discussion.
Okay.
Well, so far this year, we're actually, well, we're looking at July financials. You'll notice, when you look at the revenues for taxes, we're down $350,000. Thank you very much.
No problem.
The, oh, come on, we've got to do bigger than that.
You're far away, you're not old.
All right, you'll notice it goes from one point, last year, last year-
He's old.
Last year's revenues were listed at 1.7 million at this time, and 1.399 is this year. The primary reason for that was last year was the year when there was the change in the tax rules, and everybody was trying to prepay so that they could write off the taxes. So we actually, even before last July 1st, were carrying about $300,000 over that were all prepaid taxes, so it looked like we had a much bigger number. So what I did, I did it last week and did it again today, just a comparison of where we actually are today, now that we're into the due dates of the taxes. And last year, at this time, we were plus $592,000 from what we billed. It's just, it's the water cooler. And this year, we're right about the same place, like 580,000, so we're, actually ended up at the same place, we just didn't carry it over, which did skew the report last year or so. But we are, we're, we are doing very well, like we typically do with tax collection, and we still have another, the rest of this week and into Monday, for all those will be counted in this month without, before we go to, to any interest of calculation. So we're continuing to collect, we're getting a lot of mail, and that's been working out well. Other than that, all the rest of the revenues are pretty, you know, they're a little bit up, little bit down, but in general, we're on target. Looks like clerk fees are up quite a bit. So our total revenues, like I said, they're down about that $300,000 number, and that is primarily due to the carryover, but we are current now. Um, expense-wise, we're really, that was only the first month of the year. Uh, in many cases, we're still lower than we were a year ago, so I, expense-wise, there's really not much to report. Um, but I think we're, we're doing fine, um, in that area. And the, the real conversation goes into the treasurer's report, where we look at, um, the current balance of two point seven million dollars. We did fund all of the capital funds to the restricted funds, uh, in July, uh, which was two point two million dollars, which would've left us right around a five hundred thousand dollar balance in the account, and six hundred thousand of that was the current expense note, and a hundred and fifty thousand is the bond anticipation note for the public safety building. But we have, with the tax collections, we have funded all of the capital and restricted items, and we have now paid back our six hundred thousand dollar note on August fifteenth, so that is currently paid. We paid that on time, and, and the interest was only three thousand dollars. That wasn't too bad. And we borrowed, so we borrowed four hundred thousand dollars less, did well, and we're still where we need to be cash-wise, um, with, with taxes, and the hope is, um, depending on how FEMA comes out, when we go get our bond, because we're gonna do the, the bond, uh, applications will be done in December. Um, they get, they get approved and usually like in January sometime, and then we get funded sometime around the March timeframe. Assuming that all that works out with the bond that's approved for the five hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars for the bridges that were part of FEMA that were already built, we would then be in a position where we most likely won't have to borrow any money, because that will be putting five hundred and eighty-eight back in, and we made it through this year with the six hundred without going into our restricted funds. So we will be out of the borrowing, short-term money next spring, hopefully, depending on FEMA. But we're, we're close now. We're getting, you can, you can see the.
Closing the gap.
We're closing the gap, and, and I will say that, um, and when we looked at year-end and we talked about it the last time, and I'm waiting for the, the auditor to come, the auditor comes and does his final visit on September sixth. Um, if we were more, we were somewhere in the two hundred and forty thousand dollars to the good from revenue and expenses for last fiscal year. So with that on top of all of this, I think we've, we've made a tremendous amount of progress this past year on the finance side. So I think we're, we're in a good place, and I don't, you know, I don't have anything other special to report at that point.
I like the, uh, restricted fund sheet. There's no negatives on the balance.
Very happy that that was the case.
Other questions?
No, I mean, it's the first month of the new year, right?
Yeah.
Everything looks on track.
We lo- we love it right now.
I would hope that everything looks on track the first month of the whole month.
Well, my thing is, is given, given the items that were, that were an issue last year and looking at where we are, I'm, I'm very confident that we're gonna continue to be on track depending.
The last few years, we were actually holding back, um, funding the, um.
The capital.
The capital restricted funds or whatever, because we didn't have it at the first part of the year to do. I know we held back, the fire department really got towards.
We were doing a third, a third, and a third, and it was just cause, we were running negatives, and I just, there's no reason to do that we had the cash, so.
But now we're able to fund it completely, and it looks, everything looks like it's moving in the right way. So, thank you, Chet.
Maintain a motion to accept the July financials?
I already had. I already made the motion before we started. Aye.
Aye. Employee handbook?
Well, I wanna, can we, I need a, a motion for the treasurer's report.
Motion to accept the treasurer's report of July thirty-first, two thousand nineteen.
Any other questions?
No, we went through it all there.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So on the employee handbook, um, we, I provide, presented the draft and gave explanations at the, at the last meeting. Um, there was, the, what I, the select board basically said, you know, wanted the chance to really review the whole thing and, and see if there was any comments that we needed to, uh, see if there was anything you saw that you really wanted to make an adjustment to. Um, I didn't make any changes this time. I know there was one item we talked about the last time, but I didn't make the changes for today, because I have that, but, um, I just wanted to know if anybody brought any comments back at this point. And that includes the employee benefit attachment, because that's an attached part of the personnel policy. And, and all of these things are things that existed, that we haven't made any changes really to the policy or the benefits. It's all virtually the same. It's just a matter of formalizing the, the entire thing as an employee handbook and giving us, um, some guidelines for, for, uh, personnel reviews, um, and, and dealing with any issues that may come up, and, and everybody being clear on what's expected of them.
I'm just gonna go to section five, page four. The conduct of the employees.
Yep.
Are you making sure that the employees actually have an avenue to go to instead of coming here?
Yes. We are having, we will, you know, based on this draft, and, and I don't know if you're.
I don't, I don't see it much here, but I know when I'm on the school board, there's, you know, all of a sudden, a whole bunch of people show up that have, you know, an avenue to go to, and they don't use that avenue first.
Right, and, and one of the things that we're gonna be talking about, because there's, this is the policy part of it, and, and some procedural issues and, and how we're gonna go about things. We will be having those conversations. Actually, tomorrow at lunchtime, we're having a staff meeting. VLCT is coming to do their presentation on their EAP program, and then in addition to that, we will be going over, um, the draft that we have here. Well, I'm not sure it'll be final yet, but just making people aware of it, giving copies out so that we can start to have these conversations.
Right, and I'm not saying that they don't ever come to us. They're just steps.
No, it's, yeah, it's process.
To, and then if they don't, then they, then they ask for an executive session with the select board or whatever.
Well, actually, there is a, there's actually, if you go in the, um.
I'm looking for those in the policy.
If you go in the section.
No, no, that's in the procedure, but.
Right.
If you go in the, where is it, the?
This is a policy that just says all employees are considered, represented.
Section thirty under employee discipline, if there was any issue, this isn't like just for a complaint, but if there was an issue, there is a process by which they can make appeals to the select board and things of that nature.
Right.
So that's all outlined in this program.
Okay. But what I'm getting at is there's a process, section thirty's employee discipline.
Yeah, it's ended up.
Yeah, okay. So, uh, what I'm getting at is, is that, you know, if, let's say I'm working for the town, and I'm not a boss. You know, I have to first go to my boss, then I go to the town. If I don't feel like I'm getting.
Then you go to the manager.
Then I go to the manager.
And then you go to the select.
Then if I don't get from the ma- the board, then I ask the manager, I should be saying, I'm asking the manager for an executive session for personnel.
Right.
Not out loud, because they may not want to, because it's taken to the steps. But if somebody comes in and says they want that, then the first questions are, is, is it recorded that they first went to the.
Right.
To their boss, and then they went to the town manager? Because I don't think we should get involved until those other two steps are followed.
Right, because it may be able to be resolved without coming to us.
Right, so. Some people forget. They just always say, let's go to the select board. We could do more harm than. Because we don't know the information, and we're not their boss, and we're not the town manager.
Um, and, and.
We don't wanna talk about whistleblowers. So this is still a draft?
Mm-hmm.
So are we going to make a motion to move forward for a vote at the next, just in case people want to read it?
Yeah, I think we basically. Yeah.
Now we're putting it out front?
Yes.
And this way it's available to the public if they wanna go through it, if they have questions?
It's actually up on the website. It's, it's, it's on the, um, if you go to, uh, the Killington website and go to the select board meetings, and then you go to meeting handouts, and you go to today's date, it's on there.
Right, but I'm making a motion to move forward with the draft.
Right.
To be accepted at our next meeting.
Next meeting.
And give anybody out there that don't look, that doesn't look at the website, that watches Peg TV, or anyone that's writing for a newspaper, whatever, that people have time to comment on, on it.
Yep.
So, um, I make a motion to want the, um, handbook, um, our next, at our next select board meeting. Which is.
September third, according to this.
Second?
Third is listed on the.
Is it third? Oh, third. I did that before, didn't I?
Mm-hmm. It says Tuesday, the third.
Actually, yeah, she almost, she smacked me for that. I did that wrong before, too.
And we fixed underneath the benefits, we had fixed the plot where it was kinda confusing and almost looked like we were paying the, um, the federal taxes also.
Correct.
That was it, because we know the rest of it.
Thanks. Okay, so you have a motion to put this up, put this on the agenda for a vote.
For a vote. For a vote.
At our September third meeting.
Correct.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Conflict of interest?
Right, this is the, the policy. We, we looked at it from a draft perspective the last time, and it's a requirement by the state that the town had a conflict of interest policy. Um, this is the VLCT standard, and the board asked for the ability to, to go back and read it and see if they had any questions. Other than that, I think it's fairly straightforward.
Yeah, this was the one that you first wanted to give us a.
Right, yeah, the, I, yes, exactly. I did it the other way around this time. Did you notice that?
Yeah. This is just for, who is this for? This the employees, or is this?
Well, it's, it's for employees and any public officer. I mean, it's for elected officials as well. It's just about conflicts and nepotism and all those sort of things.
Right, and is it also for appointed?
It's for anybody who represents the town.
Okay, that makes it clear. I just want that up, you know. So on the top, policy regarding conflicts of interest and ethical conduct for the town of Killington, employees, elected officials, and appointed?
Employees elected or appointed.
Or appointed, yeah. That's all I would wanna add to it. So it's clear who falls underneath policy.
So if you'd like, I could just make that change, and then we sign it at the next one?
Yeah. Okay.
So the motion is to bring it back with, um, just that one change.
All in favor of that? Please say aye.
Aye.
Um, managers' report?
Well, we'll start with the driveway permit. Um, it's for two driveways, two adjacent pieces of property, same owner. Uh, it's for Andrew Geida. Lot twenty-two, one fifty-two, and map twenty-two, one fifty-one. Um, we had some issues where he had done some fill and created the driveways. He has removed that material. Um, the town is also going to, because of the way the ditch line, uh, works, that we're gonna be realigning that ditch while we're there and making that correction, and I've made Andrew aware of that. Um, with the following conditions. Um, I would recommend that we approve these for lot one fifty-two, which is the closest one to Anthony Way. Um, it would have a twenty-four inch culvert required at this location. The culvert shall have a minimum of twelve inches of cover. The ditch shall be excavated. I can make it so you can read it if you'd like. The ditch shall be cut, excavated to ensure consistent flow through the structure, which may require lowering the new, the ditch line elevation on both inlet and outlet, or to meet invert elevation of the culvert. The driveway shall be crowned and graded to ensure all runoff is directed away from the roadway and into the ditch line. The driveway shall have a width not to exceed twenty-four feet, and shall be perpendicular, perpendicular to Killington Road for the first thirty feet. Um, the driveway shall be at no more than a five percent grade for the first twenty feet from the roadway to ensure acceptable site distance. Um, and the only difference with the other one, which is lot one fifty-one, is that no reculvert is required at that location, because it is right adjacent to, uh, a large municipal culvert. So there's no culvert required at the one location. There is a culvert required at the other. Same conditions beyond that.
Okay, so this is going through you, the town manager, because you're the one that gives the permit conditions?
Correct.
Where is in here, because the town of Killington's road is paved?
That's in the, that's actually in the actual application, the standard part of it. That's in here.
Okay, so these are just your other, this is your.
Right, because this, these are, these are additional conditions, because when you go in here, it talks about stormwater, it talks about.
So he's gonna fill, fulfill all that, and he's gonna fulfill these that you had asked him to?
Yeah.
So motion to approve lot one fifty-two driveway, um, permit?
And that's the one with the culvert?
Oh, it's, I'm just approving, I'm just making, yeah, I know, but I'm just approving the one, one fifty-two, and you have all the specifics, right?
Right.
I don't need to know. It, it goes to you, so.
Uh, all those in favor of driveway permit for one fifty, no, lot number one fifty-two, please say aye.
What is the next lot number?
One fifty-one.
Motion to approve the driveway permit presented to us by the town manager for lot, for lot one fifty-one.
There are some additional conditions here.
That, yeah, that has the, that was the same conditions without the culvert.
They're the same without the culvert.
That's correct.
Uh, all in favor of Jim's motion for one, lot one fifty-one, please say aye.
Aye. And the only reason why this came up was because it was done beforehand.
That's correct.
Otherwise, we're not gonna have all these conversations. You're the town manager.
We would've.
You go out with your foreman or whatever, and you boom, boom.
We would've had the same conditions, and the select board would've approved it. It just became a longer conversation.
And we're not gonna get involved in it, because you're the one that's making the recommendations with the foreman.
He started before the permits were in place.
Right.
Right.
That is what it was.
Okay, so anyone watching, you don't put everybody through this.
Rework it, to come back to where the conditions were.
Town manager and the foreman are happy.
Um, the Killington Road master plan update. Um, this is just a notification that on August twenty-eighth at the KPAA, um, we are going to have the kickoff meeting for developing the Killington Road master plan. Uh, VHB, the engineer that's gonna be doing the work, um, will be doing a brief presentation to explain how we're gonna go about the process and, and where we're gonna go, and how people will be involved. Um, you will note that at some point in the near future, they're gonna be doing some survey and data collection along Killington Road. Um, but, you know, this, the plan has not started. We're gonna take all the information we've gathered from previous, uh, studies, and then the, the planning commission will be the center of this program. There'll probably be some form of a committee included, because the resort will be included, and, and.
Land company?
And, what's that?
The land company.
The land company, and the, um, and any business owners that wanna be part of the committee would be able to be there, or people that are on Killington Road. Um, but the goal is to, over the next six to twelve months, depending on how it goes, is to actually have developed a long-term master plan for Killington Road, including preliminary construction design, so that when we start applying for grants, you know, I'll give an example, that if we have walkway shown on both sides of the road, that we now can show, uh, a complete plan of what we're trying to accomplish, so that we'll be looked upon more favorably when we ask for grants and things of that nature. Um, planning for the future, you know, if we have, if there's any, you know, nineteen eighty-six, eighty-seven was the last time Killington Road was reconstructed, and I'm talking about the construction part of it, not the lane configuration. Um, we're gonna have to be replacing gravels. We're gonna have to be removing ledge. There's a lot of work that has to go through on the next phase of this. Um, so we wanna make sure we have a, a real clear picture of what we're gonna be dealing with, so that we can actually put some real numbers to it and figure out how we're gonna get this project done. I'm sure it'll be done in phases. This is not an all-at-one-time project. Um, but the goal is to have a plan to look to that we can work with. Um, so I think with the, the traffic experience that VHB has, plus they're also the ones that prepared the traffic study for the resort village program. They have the latest numbers, and, and we're basically building on what has already been built, so it does save us some time and money.
And technically, this is our next meeting, August twenty-eighth?
Yes, we're gonna be, I'll be, it will be warranted as a select board meeting, because the hope is that the select board will be there. Actually, there'll be another function that we'll need the select board to do at that meeting, which is to sign the, the financial documents for the one million dollar bond anticipation note for the roads.
Which is, not to confuse the people, that our next meeting for the want is September third.
That's correct. This is the special meeting in between.
Right.
I went to the, I've been going to the planning commission meetings lately, and one of the, one of the items was for the sewer that we were talking about. And the planning commission, for some reasons, a little not sure or whatever, and they wanna throw the sewer back to the select board to take charge, and I just wanna make sure that if we're, I mean, not the sewer, the water, the water system, okay, that, um, any Killington Road master plan, if we're planning for the future.
That's correct. No, the, the goal is to look at all.
We need to have at least the pipe in there to accept.
The goal is to look at the entire infrastructure and actually do the preliminary design, so that we can include that when we start that process, because, you know, I believe that at some point, we were gonna end up with that, um, whether it's through the fire district or a whole new thing.
Planning commission wanted to step away from the water and throw it back to the select board to be in charge of, and all I'm saying is that I'm one of the ones from the last term that I was, the last time I was on the board, that got pushed for us to have that, and if they don't wanna step up and take for planning our future for water. And if they don't want to step up and take for planning our future for water, I would love to be the person that would work with whoever.
Well, the reality is, the reality is, at this point...
It's just a talk.
At this point, what it's going to be is, we have an existing sewer, pretty much almost the whole length of Killington Road. Basically, what it's going to be is lines on the paper to say, if you were going to put one in, you're going to put it over here. And when we start moving into the, you know, if the village has started and there is a desire for water and there's going to be a chunk of the money put up as part of that, you know, then we would have the place to put it. And all it is, is a matter of designing the pipe when we go through final design. But we will be included, all infrastructure that would be possible.
And all I'm saying is that the planning commission wants to step away from it and throwing it back to the select board. And what I'm getting at is that, you know, I don't want to wait till the last minute. This is planning and we should be talking about a water system.
Absolutely. And I've already spoken to...
So nothing's happening there. So if you, as the town manager, can be somehow setting up another subcommittee or whatever for water, I would love to be part of that.
Very good. Lister correction?
Kurt, did you have a question? Because I know you're interested in the road being done.
Yeah, I am. But I also wanted to go back to the driveway permit process because on my street, first of all, a culvert was put in by the town about 15 years ago. And initially, the culvert was high enough to have it at, I don't think the town measured the height of the culvert. So right now, the culvert is about five inches above my basement level. So between the footings and the other plumbing that's in place right now, there's not a lot of room for the water from the house to go to my pond to go to the culvert. There's almost no room for error. So the lack of any sort of measurement on that was just borne out because I just put footings in a foundation. And I'm five inches away. The culvert is an 18-inch culvert. And when the rain that comes down the mountain side, under the access road...
Can you tell us the name of the road?
Mountain View Drive.
Okay.
Okay, so Mountain View Drive, for a little while, it kind of worked. And then two things occurred. One is that, I guess Irene came in, but about that time or thereafter, a neighbor started to put together a parking area.
Which we were involved in.
How were you involved in that?
Well, just when we had...
Hire on an engineering firm. That was supposedly...
I know, and that was a really Ritz-Norton first attempt at doing something. Because I will tell you what happened. The woman from the town came in.
Well, from the engineering firm? From the engineering firm.
The town's engineer.
Well, that's true, okay. So she made enough of a stink. Good for her. Because there was about, it appeared to be, three or four foot of compacted soil illegally, according, I think, to what Chet said, no permit was filed for, no driveway, no nothing. Which still seems to be going on at this point. So right now, I have a situation where every time it rains hard, my pond level goes up. So at least it takes a little bit of the overview on that. And then it goes basically across my front yard and across my neighbor's front yard. So, but the problem is, is that it does nothing to solve the problem by where the culvert is left. Part of the problem with the culvert is not only where it was initially placed by the town, but also between Irene and the interaction of my neighbor with the wetlands on the other side. The water has very little place or any real expediency to get under the road and out. So there are times that it literally collects on the far side of the road for a day or more before it finally starts to dissipate. So in a discussion or two I had with Chet, I approached Chet and I said, the wetlands was totally unsatisfactory because her penalty was go to the people that built the parking area and to basically say to them, you need to take four or five inches of topsoil. There's no topsoil there. It's all compacted. So you need to take four or five inches off of the top of that and you will have returned the wetlands to a perfectly pristine condition. So I almost thought it was a joke when my neighbor basically said to me, all I had to do was take four or five inches off the top of my parking area and I'm now good as gold.
So my question then would go down to, is that what the actual state said?
I don't know...
Did it go to the state?
The state wetlands bureau, the office in Rutland, did come out, issued a violation letter, told them what they wanted. He made the correction, which was taking out four to six inches of soil and then gave him that was okay.
Good. And that's what I'm asking, that...
The state gave that permission?
The board said hire on an engineer...
We had her...
Go out and make the complaint to the state wetlands department.
Right, and we did that.
And now the state gave the person instructions of what they were supposed to do.
Right.
And you're saying that you don't believe that was enough to correct the... I mean...
It's still causing a problem. This spring, the street or the road still muds up like mad. And but Chet said sometime, I think you said sometime, the schedule over the next 10 years would allow for something to be done to Mountain View Drive so that... But if I wanted to accelerate, I could go and hire the engineer and maybe her go back to the state.
So I'm going to...
Let me clarify that though.
You clarify, but then I have a question.
Okay, the issue is, just for the sake of argument, that is a very low road in a wetland area. The biggest issue that is facing that whole area, because whether or not the town does rebuild the gravel road there and whether or not the town replaces the culverts, the level of outflow water is not going to change because it's actually a downstream issue. It is a very flat, very slow-moving area of wetlands and water movement. The issue becomes when some of that storage and flow pattern was interrupted, which is not part of the town's portion, it did create, and I would estimate that it created a slightly slower process of getting the water out.
When the... What did you just say? When this...
When the parking lot and everything that the state addressed, there's still more fill in there that's taking up some storage and the ability for the water to move quickly out.
Okay.
The reality is, is if we rebuild the road and put in all new culverts, it's not going to change the outflow capability.
So this is where my question comes in, is that we have it all clear that we hired our engineer. They went to the state. The state came in and said, take four to five, or four to six inches off, okay? There's a town road that goes through there. Are we saying as a town, as a town manager, saying that they followed what the state said, but still at the height that it's at, is still causing damage to the road?
I will say that the road mudding up, while this would be contributing, it's always been slow. It's very flat water. And this muddy road is, like many of the others, it gets very muddy. If we could reduce a little bit of the mud of the road, if we reconstruct the road at some point, which we may, but the real issue is getting the water out of it. And that's where the problem is because it's an outflow problem. There's not any fall to get it there. Because if you go out to the road and you put an 18-inch culvert in...
I get all that and I don't really, I'm saying, we're being told four to five or four to six inches was taken out. How much was added in? What was there? What was the wetlands and how much fill was put in?
I've heard rumors of up to four feet. I never saw that. It was done before my time.
Okay, so can I just...
Four to six inches transfers into four foot that should have been...
Well, the issue is, so where I'm going with this is that if two feet was added, okay, or four feet was added, but only four to six was taken out, okay? If there was another foot or two taken out of that area, would it change anything on that road? That's what I'm getting at.
No. What I had talked to, when I was talking to the landowner...
Are you saying it would have more storage?
The issue that I said was, is the only way to really affect change in this situation, and I don't know how they would do from a permits perspective, but a wetlands would have to be approached along with all of the adjacent landowners. At the back of where this fill happened, which is where kind of the drainage flow goes and then works its way out past Otto's place, that whole ditch line would need to be cleaned out. It would need a maintenance program. But because of the way they've classified the wetlands, I don't know if they'll allow us to do it. So what I recommended to the landowner was, talk to your neighbors. If they're amenable to trying to fix the drainage, which would help the road, they could approach, because a landowner has to be the one who fills out the application for a wetlands approval. And this is well beyond our right of way. Is there, is there any possibility that the state would allow them to do cleaning? Because the fact is, if they would, it's like a day's worth of excavator work. It's not a huge project. So the issue is being allowed to actually disturb that soil and area as far as the state's concerned and as far as the other landowners are concerned. That's where the real issue is. The town doesn't really have any... We have no authority. We have no ability to affect the permit. We could, we would support the permit, you know, with A&R and would have that conversation. But it's an issue that really the only possible solution, because I will say that the town would greatly appreciate and would probably participate in this because if we were able to lower the invert elevations a little bit of those culverts, it would dramatically improve the drainage situation in that whole area.
So would... And I'm going to use Kurt, I'm going to use you because you're here.
By the town and by the town engineer to spend money in order to have a survey done so that we can determine if there is a solution to this.
The solution relies with the wetlands right now.
Yeah, but I'm not even there yet, guys. Where I'm at is, is that if there was four feet put into a wetlands and four or six inches came off, and what I hear this gentleman Kurt saying is, is that because of it, the water is mudding up the road and then it takes a day or two for it to dry out.
Takes a couple of weeks in the spring for the level on the far side of the road to stop saturating the road.
But what I'm getting at is, is that if there really was two, three, four feet put in there, okay, and...
Why was only six inches taken out?
Why was only six taken out? And if, and I'm asking the town manager slash ex officio foreman, okay, that if there was another two or three feet dug out of that area, okay, all right, would that allow some of the heavier rains to sit into there without affecting our road? That's my question.
I think it's that because of the outfall elevation, I think it'll be minimal. It would help, but not enough to stop like the road mudding up and all of that. It really is the outflow all the way out. And I think most of that got changed in Irene, from what I understand, that it really silted in and, you know, it's a drainage area, but the problem is, is looking at it from a wetlands perspective, if you improve the drainage, you reduce the wetland. And how will that be viewed?
Yeah, but I would be taking, if that was done to me, that the wetland was already disturbed and it was added and I would be saying so...
Again, it goes by the back of this area we're talking about. The water goes by there now. Technically, you wouldn't even have to take that out if they could fix the ditch line.
So then my last bit of questions on this here is, what I'm hearing is, is saying, we're encouraging these neighbors to fund, I don't know, $1,000, $2,000 worth of engineering stuff. Is it in the best interest of the town? What are we spending on fixing that road each year?
Well, I will say, we're doing the same thing we do on every other muddy road. We're putting the sandstone, you know, the stone product in to try and firm it up when it gets bad enough and we grade it off a couple of times and we throw more sand in it. I mean, you know, you're pumping about a couple hundred dollars a year.
Prior to Irene, were we doing that much work on that road? I don't care about the other roads.
From what I understand, that road has always been very muddy because it's very low and very wet. I mean, it's just like, you know, we're looking to improve the situation, but it's got a little worse, but it was always somewhat bad.
Do we know what it would cost to have what you're saying?
Well, does the application to the wetland have to come from a homeowner?
Yes, landowner.
So a landowner could approach them?
Landowners would have to all agree on this and we would have, all I would do is, the landowner, because it doesn't have to cost you any money initially. The landowners, if you have a consensus of the, I think, is it four abutters there or three?
There's five of us.
There's five, okay. So the five of the people who have property lines that abut that would need to, whether you sign a note or something like that and you call the wetlands person out there and it's Zapata.
Well, what are we agreeing to?
That you want to improve...
That there's an issue because of the wetlands and you want to move forward.
You want to, it's causing problems with the road. The town will be present. And we have a conversation with the wetlands engineer and say, this is causing these problems. Would you consider? That's question number one.
Okay, three out of the four people, their only problem is in the springtime, they're almost up to their axles in mud for about two weeks or so. Now, it doesn't seem like a very long time to some people, but if you're going out two or three times, it's a lot of, especially with a stake.
You've got some nice neighbors.
Up until a point, but it doesn't impact me. What impacts me is, when my house was built 36, 37 years ago, it was built at a very low elevation. I've owned that house for 35 years. And in 35 years, I've never had a problem like I'm having now because at one point, the culvert was even like a foot, a foot and a half higher. And there was enough of a dry area on the far side of the road that most of the time, 95 or more, the water would go through the culvert and that would be the end of it. Now, over the last five years, since we've developed a parking area as well as Irene came in, now we can blame some of this on Irene because I had a stake on the far side of the road marking my property. And I couldn't find it two and a half years ago when I moved up here. And it was buried by six to 12 inches of dirt.
Salt. And that's where the real problem is.
So all I'm getting back now is that there's five neighbors. There's no cost first to file the paperwork with...
Well, just to go have her come out and do a site visit and have the conversation. Are you willing to consider? That's the first question.
Right, so can we instruct you as a town manager to gather these five people here and just say that we need your signatures for such a letter to go?
Okay, I spoke to the town engineer and she's perfectly willing to come out for a fee. And then at that point, to talk to the young lady from the Wetlands Association.
Well, the reality is, is if the town's going to be involved, because this will benefit the town as far as outflow with the culverts, because the biggest issue we have is we, the culverts aren't deep enough to get any cover on them. I would have her present at that meeting with Zapata. And then we have the conversation. But the start was, and what I had asked you to do is, if you could get me, tell me, you know, who I got to talk to and everybody's on board with moving forward with this, then we can have the conversation.
So I'm going to make a motion that we instruct the town manager to put a letter together for the five neighbors and give it to you and you get the signatures. Is that fair enough, Chet?
That works.
Chet? I think the confusion here is what kind of letter has to go and all that other stuff?
This is just a matter of, is everybody amenable to the concept of improving the drainage on West Mountain View Drive and saying what the problems are? We want to list, here's what the issues are.
And now is there, I'm not going to say the name, but for the engineer to come out, what is the fee that they're saying is the charge?
Typically, we will pay, I mean, for her to come out and have the verbal conversation before we move forward, because we're going to make a plan after that. It's going to be a couple hundred dollars.
Right, okay. So are we looking for in this letter that we're going to spread the cost out amongst them or is the town willing to pay the fee?
Well, I think the town would be willing to pay that initial consultation fee and then we'll have to go from there depending on what's going to happen.
She had indicated that she would come out 45 minutes ahead of a meeting with Zapata, talk to me about the drainage issues, have the meeting with Zapata and then go back to her office and come up with a master drainage plan for, it looks like starting at $1,000.
Well, that's because you're getting a plan. I want to have the conversation before I authorize a... Well, that's because you're getting a plan, I want to have the conversation before I authorize a plan.
Plan on writing, not.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, no, no.
Not, not a plan, not a.
So what I'm saying here is, is that we're gonna get a letter that's gonna be able to go, give it to you, get the neighbors, the town is gonna pick up the first consultation, okay? And then from there, Chet will be able to get a better idea because he will be there with Zapata and the engineer and get it moving from there. At some point, there might be a plan, but now that sheet that he gives you with the people signing off on, you know, then, there's nothing upfront now, but it may come out with a plan that we may have to say that this is what a property owner and this is what the town is willing to pay.
The town, the town will have a certain amount of work we're gonna do, but the, the homeowners might have to do the ditch work on their property or whatever it is.
Well, nobody, Otto has no ditch work.
Right.
Tim has no ditch work.
Actually, they'd be surprised, I think it's gonna go up by Otto's house to get it right.
Right.
But you need to get this thing going, and does that help you out, what we just said? Okay, so my motion on the floor is to, um, have our town manager put a letter together for Kurt, I'm sorry, I don't know, okay, all right, to have a form ready for his, his neighbors to sign off on to allow the town to call in the engineer and Zapata and, and take the next step from there.
And arrange a meeting.
And to arrange a meeting.
Right.
I put the motion, you could shorten it up, you could.
To, no, town manager needs to draft a letter. Draft a letter and arrange a meeting.
Okay.
With the town engineer.
And whoever this Zapata is.
Wetland, she's the wetlands representative of A and R.
Okay, a new one?
Yeah, she's in Rutland.
Okay, all in favor of that motion, I'm not repeating the whole motion. You say aye?
At least it gets you going, okay?
Okay, it's started. Okay.
As long as I don't run out of power for too long a period of time over the next month or so.
Well, that could be the builder's fault.
That knocks all of my sump pump system out.
Okay, Listers?
Lister correction, um, Listers received a notice from the Earl Thompson land that the value of their land they sold to Kimball and Durant on Barrowstown Road had not been taken off of there, the Thompson's tax bill. Listers checked and the Thompsons were correct and the valuation had been corrected one year before and changes made in Emmerich, however, the changes had not been saved because the same error showed up in the next bill. So the valuation prior to the change was five hundred and forty-four thousand four eighty and the value after the change is three twenty-three, it's a net deduct of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, six hundred, six hundred and twenty.
So the Thompson property should go down to three twenty-three.
That's correct.
Whoever bought the piece of property from the Thompson, we cannot go back after them because the bill was already sent out, so we cannot.
We gotta fix it from here on.
But we have to fix the Thompson property.
Right.
Down to three twenty-three, and since we sent out our tax bills already, we cannot charge the current because we can't go after. Motion to accept the Lister's recommendation.
Favor?
Aye. Hopefully they get it this time, so next year we can get. Build.
Okay.
Um, this is, uh, the next thing is the VLCT Annual Meeting Delegate Designation. They sent a request that the select board chair signs it, uh, but it's a we the select board council of designate the following individual as the voting delegate for our sitting town at the two thousand nineteen annual business meeting, which I will.
Make a motion, we nominate Chet Hagenberg.
Don't think there's gonna be a second nomination.
I'm just waiting for a second.
A second yours.
Yes, okay.
There's not gonna be a second nomination. Uh, all those in favor of having Chet Hagenberg represent the town of Killington at the VLCT meeting, please say aye.
Aye. Thank you, Chet.
I'll let you fill out your thing, chairperson.
So, uh, under department updates, I'm just, uh, to let you know, um, we have the, the new rec director slash after school prank program director started yesterday. Um, she's getting a lot of information very quickly, she's doing the last week of camp. Um, and will be starting, uh, meeting with the school tomorrow and then being ready for that next Wednesday, so where she'll be doing the dual function. Um, I'm very optimistic that this is gonna go very well and I think we're, we're in a good place.
So on that note, the prior rec director and, and Chuck has to recuse himself from here on, on this topic, whatever, but the prior rec director left at what time?
July nineteenth.
July nineteenth, so, um, we have been without a rec director for one month, but that's not technically right, saying that we have not been with a rec director for a month.
Commission chair has been the acting rec director for the past month, um, through today. She's actually doing, uh, a lot of the, uh, training for, for Sarah, letting her know, you know, where all the issues are and all of that. So she's been very active, very involved and very responsive and, and helpful at the town to make sure that we had a a reasonably smooth transition.
And she's been putting in somewhere eight, ten, twelve hours at times?
Yeah, she's put in a lot of hours.
Okay, so, um, when we started this, when we started this process of posting and then whatever and we had said that if the rec, current rec director was going to leave, that there would be funds to help someone to step in.
Right.
So without getting into personnel of what the funds were, the salary for that period there or whatever, I'm going to make a, um, motion that, um, the chair of the recreation department that took this position um, is, um, paid the, um, stipend, okay?
For that same, for that same period?
For that same time of period, so we don't have any federal, you know, that we don't have any insurance or anything like that there.
That's the amount.
That's the amount there, so, so I would say for the one month's work that we, I'm making a motion that we pay the chair of the recreation department thirty-five hundred dollars for her time that she filled in when we did not have a recreation department person. And, um, Chuck knows why he has to recuse.
Okay, and the money's coming out of money that was already budgeted for the position, so this is not additional money.
That's correct.
So, all in favor of the motion to pay the.
Chair.
Killington, the rec department chair for her covering the rec department, please say aye.
Aye. I want to say she did a great job and really it kept the program in place. We did, like you had said, we had already budgeted funds for that.
Right. Um, in addition, um, we had a very good candidate apply for the, uh, highway and facilities position and we were able to fill that position with somebody who's under the age of fifty for the first time, and I know you're not supposed to say that, but it's nice to have somebody up and coming. Um, and he is very qualified and we have offered him the job and he will be starting on September third.
So he's accepted the position?
Yes.
Well, we can say who it is.
Trevor, I forgot his last name, Patterson, I believe.
Written down?
Yeah, it's, it's my office, so I didn't write it down here, but it's Trevor, I didn't announce it.
Just the next meeting, bring us his name on the twenty-eight, so we can at least welcome Trevor to the town employee. I didn't think I was like gonna hit you with a curveball on that one.
Yeah, and I was like, of all the things, I was like, oh, I didn't write his name down. I think it was Patterson, but I'm not gonna swear to it.
No, 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 it's in the budget.
Department to hire.
Yeah, but I would just like to welcome Trevor.
So, um, and, and, uh, I did mention earlier that we are, from the highway department perspective, we will be wrapping up uh, the town's portion of the road projects and by the end of the first week of September, we will be done with, uh, the work that was bonded for the, for Killington Road and East Mountain Road and that will all be complete. Um, also, the Killington Road last section will have been milled, paved and, and done, so we will have completed all of our summer tasks at that point, we will be having some more, uh, guardrail work done later here in the fall. Um, but I think we, we've accomplished all of our goals and we have about four or five more culverts we're gonna be replacing on some gravel roads while we're doing the fall grading. So, um, and the, just a reminder, on September, is it the twenties, I can't remember the dates.
Tuesday's the third.
It's the, well, it's the twenty-second or twenty-first or. It's a fairy tale festival for the library, um, it's been a very successful.
That's, that was great, the last time.
On September twenty-first and twenty-second. Um, so everybody, you know, it's, it's a, it's a great event we have and it, and it's been bringing in many, many libraries and a lot of people from around the state, so, uh, that's been a, a great program. Um, and I think that's all I have at this point.
Do we have any border liquor control license?
We do have one.
Is it a license or is it?
It is a license renewal.
Or?
It is a first class license for Baja burrito.
Motion to allow the town clerk to move forward with the license, liquor license for Baja burrito.
All those in favor, you say aye?
Aye.
Are there any others?
I have no others.
Okay, is there other business, other questions? I know you came in late after citizen input, is there anything you wanted to bring up?
I did, I was, I interested in the marijuana dispensary. Topic, I noticed that there was somebody on the wall, but I missed the discussion and the final results, if there were any.
Uh, there was no vote on it. There are some changes we'd like to see made to the policy and that's, and then it will be, come up again at our September third meeting.
Where the town, where the select board is standing at is that we are not in favor of a medical marijuana dispensary in town. If the state makes it, that recreational is allowed. And the state has allowed that. Uh, but there are some changes that we had asked for, and I'll go over with you afterwards because we did.
At this time, it's not being allowed?
Uh, well, at this time, there is nobody coming to us and we don't have any regulation on it right now. So there is, I mean, I think Chet can get you a copy of the, um, the draft of the draft and with the proposed changes to that draft. And then there will be a discussion at our meeting on September third, correct? Again.
Well, the way it's set up right now is the board would make a decision, the young lady that was here tonight has started a petition uh, with the correct number of signatures, and it's not a huge number. Um, it would act, it would actually come up as a town vote.
I'm not sure about that, we would have to find out from council if it.
Well, from council, but that's, in the past, that's the procedure, is that, um, a they circulate a flyer, not a flyer, but people.
A legally bound petition.
And they have to, it has to be, it's submitted and then the town clerk verifies that they're all members of the town, you know, so that all the people signing it are town members, uh.
And then the town, the town manager will go to the, to, to, to the attorney. I'm not really sure, there are certain things.
Within sixty days, it, they have sixty days to appeal.
To ask for a vote.
And if, and they can ask for a vote and if they, uh, have the signatures and create the petition, then it will go to a town vote.
On this issue, we know that already.
And how many signatures are they required, is it one percent, ten percent?
For some reason, I'm thinking it's like eighty, but I'm not sure for us, because I think, I think it's ten percent or something like that. But I don't know.
And we just went into the nineties with registered voters this year, so that number may have changed.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the specific number, I'd have to ask Lucretia what it is today.
The, the town clerk would know precisely what that number is.
Well, it all depends.
With the petition, and then it goes to the town attorney.
The board is going to take a position on the, on, on the policy that's put in front of us, okay? Um, by make, if the, if the, if the board right now said, yeah, we're gonna put it for a vote, then the board is going to have to call for a special meeting and everything else. And the board, me personally on this issue here, I really think that, you know, we make our decision and then if there are voices out there that are over ten percent or ten percent of the total voters that want to sign a petition, then they're gonna force it to a vote. All right, we may say, we vote for this policy and then there's X amount of days that people can come and say, we want to vote throughout the whole town. It could. It could. Okay. Um, just underneath other business, Castleton's moving into town on Thursday, University, for the hotel and hospitality program and they are having a, sometime in September, a ribbon cutting and they would like the town manager or any other officials from the town to.
And where would this be?
Um, it will be at the Castleton Hotel and Hospitality, uh, building. So.
It does, it looks nice, okay?
Okay.
Okay, uh, is there a need for executive session?
I don't have any.
I don't have any today.
Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?